Encourage active and informed participation in government. To increase understanding of major public policy issues. And to influence public policy through education and advocacy. We do not ever support any political candidates. To learn more, please go to our website, L W V dot westford dot org. Our site also includes a series of short videos explaining the various aspects of town meeting. These videos are also available on our town moderators webpage. Uh, and it's a great source to learn more. And with that in mind, I first like to thank all our panelists for attending and our attendees for attending, of course. And I'm going to turn it over to Angela for a brief uh primer on town, special town meeting.
Well, thank you so much, Becky, and thank you to the league for hosting this uh informative opportunity for people to learn about town meeting. So as everyone knows by now, I hope um special town meeting is coming up uh this coming Monday. And the meeting will start um precisely at seven P M. Uh, we're gonna start checking in voters at five thirty P M. We're expecting a pretty large crowd, so um I would advise people to get there early. To ensure that they get parking and get themselves checked in and and seated uh before we begin at seven. We are going to have remote parking at the Abbott School, the Chrisipoli School. And the Robinson School, in addition to the parking at Westford Academy, with shuttle buses running. Uh continuously from the remote locations back and forth to W A. We've got a great setup for check in, thanks to our town clerk, Lori Shaw, and expect to get people in and seated. Uh quickly, um and uh we'll, we'll begin right on time. There are ten articles which we're gonna go over here tonight on the agenda and um. I expect to finish uh within a adequate amount of time on Monday night, but in the event. That we don't finish, uh we have um a continuation date for the following Monday. And uh we also have um transportation available, free transportation for voters. We uh offered free childcare, but uh the signup is over for that. And uh since no one signed up, there won't be any childcare at this meeting because we just aren't prepared for it since no one signed up in advance. And uh I think that it will be a good meeting, an informative meeting, and I hope to see lots of people there.
Great, thank you, Angela. And as Angela said, we are going to uh review. Um and answer questions regarding the ten articles that are going to be up for discussion on Monday night. Uh and with this, we have a variety of our lovely town officials and um staff to address those, which I will introduce as we. Go through each article. So let's get right to it. Article one um is an article with regard to the um. Bylaw to regulate firearm businesses. And to talk us through that, tonight, we have Jeff Morrison, our assistant town manager and chief Mark Chambers. Gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you very much. So Article One proposes to amend the zoning bylaw to define and regulate firearm businesses separately from other uses. If approved, the following types of uses would be considered a firearm business. The purchaser sale of firearms, ammunition, or firearm accessories, or the performing of gunsmithing services. This bylaw would allow for firearm businesses within the commercial highway and industrial highway zoning districts. Which are generally located along Littleton Road, Liberty Way, and portions of Powers Road. It would require a special permit for firearm businesses and designate the planning board as a special permit granting authority. It would actively involve the police department as part of the planning board review process. And require applicants to submit site-specific security plans for review by the police department. It would require buffers between distinct firearm businesses and between firearm businesses in schools specifically. There'd be a one thousand foot buffer to schools, and currently, the Nishoba Valley Technical High School is the only school that would affect. The commercial highway and industrial highway zoning districts. And it would require a five hundred foot separation distance between different firearm businesses. Due to constitutional protections and evolving case law, it is important that proposed regulations not be overly restrictive. Furthermore, there are safeguards in place such that the planning board could waive or reduce setback requirements so as to prevent. An effective prohibition of firearm businesses. As compared to the October twenty twenty-three proposed zoning bylaw amendment to regulate firearm businesses, this version differs in the following ways. Firing ranges are not included in the definition of firearm businesses. There are no buffer requirements to childcare centers, religious uses, or locations where children commonly congregate in organized activities. And lastly, there are no limitations on the number of special permits that may be granted for firearm businesses. The planning board and select board unanimously voted five zero zero to recommend this article to town meeting. And that concludes my part of the summary. Um, I don't know if Chief, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Actually, before the Chief Chambers speaks, I neglected to remind people that there is, if you want to. Submit questions, there is a Q and A button in your Zoom. Um, you may submit questions through the Q and A, and we will get to them uh as timely as we can. Um, hopefully, as each article, you'll ask a question for that relevant article. Uh, my apologies for neglecting to remind people of that. Sorry, Chief Chambers, continue.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, moving forward with this bylaw, this, the bylaw that's moving forward this year or. At special town meeting is the bylaw that I was searching for last year when I, or two years ago when we first began this process. Where we've asked for some site-specific monitoring and security. Moving forward this year, interactions with the police department for quality, special time, any of security measures. The as well as the buffer between firearms businesses. We think it's important to maintain that buffer. We really want to avoid a situation like Littleton had dealt with over the past several years. And uh, reason why I was requesting the buffer between businesses is if you make it more difficult for individuals to. Skirt the system, so to say, with playing the frame game by manufacture or putting together firearms that. Are against what Massachusetts is authorized and approved. You know, they would purchase a a frame from or a lower part of a a pistol or or firearm from. One dealer and then the upper from another and complete a firearm, and they can skirt. The approved firearms list. So we're trying to avoid that, and we think that by making it a little bit more difficult where, you know, you have dealers not in the same room. That's the request for the five hundred foot buffer. So I think that uh. Moving forward with this bylaw is a minimum request for what would satisfy public safety, and I think it may. Make it difficult for uh people that script that firearms regulations.
Thank you. Um, I am not seeing any questions at the moment. Um, so why don't we move on to article number two? We can always come back to questions on article one if they pop up. Um, and for that, I'm gonna uh turn the floor over to Joe Genowitz. To um address the bylaws on usage, usages, usage.
Very, thank you very much, and I'll actually touch upon articles uh two and three kind of uh in tandem as they kind of go hand in hand. Um, so Article Two proposes to define and regulate several new uses under our zoning bylaw. And makes a modest modification as to a few existing use allowances and definitions within the bylaw. Uh, while it's a a healthy best practice to regularly review our zoning bylaw. Uh, our department, Land Use Management Department, has received several inquiries for the same types of businesses over the last couple of years. Where the proposed business did not neatly fit into any current use categories defined under our bylaw currently. Uh, this matters in instances where if a proposed use is not defined under our bylaw, then it may be prohibited. In such cases, in such cases, petitioners may seek a use variance. But this is a high legal threshold that deters a lot of potential applicants and potential businesses here in town. So by defining and regulating these uses, the town maintains control while also promoting additional economic development options. To strengthen the commercial tax base. A few of these new use categories and definitions um would include brew pubs, breweries, distilleries, wineries, and contractors' yards. Uh, some use allowances we're seeking to amend consist of allowing restaurants in the industrial highway district. Which for those that may not know, that's located primarily along Route one ten and along Powers Road. And allowing massage establishments, and again, industrial highway district. Uh, the commercial highway district, which is also primarily along Route one ten. And and the industrial aid district, which is primarily along forty. Article Three seeks to establish parking requirements for several uses. Or again, make some minor changes for uses currently identified within the table of parking requirements. So for some of those new uses, under Article Two, if town meeting votes to establish these business types as distinct uses. Then we should also establish a parking requirement for these uses that they're looking to seek to locate here in town. Um, the most prominent change to our existing parking requirements comes in the form of reducing the requirement for a business or professional office uses. Uh, the proposal is to reduce this requirement from one space for every two hundred square feet of gross floor area. The one for every four hundred square feet of gross floor area. This stems in large part from industry changes for a number of business or professional office uses where. The proliferate proliferation of remote or hybrid work has become normal practice. And it's also supported from historical data of businesses here in Westford that staff reviewed um during this process. Um, so based on, based on those factors, there are a number of properties of this business type um that. We felt the parking lots could operate with a lot greater efficiency with a reduced parking requirement. And by having park requirements that are more in line with modern day usage. Uh, town may realize several benefits of land that's otherwise not being used and if it's freed up. Um, for instance, you could have a reduction in the amount of impervious area, which helps to reduce heat island effects. Create more open space, reduce stormwater impacts, each of which helps the town achieve some of its sustainability goals. Or alternatively, you can allow for additional development by either uh making new projects more financially viable. If we're reducing the cost of building parking that's otherwise not going to be used. Uh, or providing more opportunities for redevelopment by making our existing developed land more efficient. And additional benefit, additional businesses, pardon me, uh can help to diversify the town's tax base and support other area businesses. So by making these small changes in our zoning bylaw, we hope we can provide opportunities to continue to make positive changes in town. Enable additional commercial development. Um, these articles have received favorable recommendation from the Select Board, Planning Board, and Economic Development Committee. And we're just hoping uh to have both support on these both, on both of these articles on Monday.
Great, thank you, Joe. Um, I see no questions. Just a reminder to the voters, you can submit questions. Oh. Angela has raised her hand.
I, I just want to point out to the audience that, as Joe said, we will be discussing these two articles together. We'll be voting on them separately, but the discussion will take place together since the two articles relate to the same uses.
All right, and seeing no questions on any of the three articles we've discussed so far. Um, let's move on to Article Four, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Jeff to discuss the bylaw relative to the use of temporary trailers.
Thank you very much. So as part of their review of Westford's recent zoning bylaw amendments. The municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office had to conduct an overall review of our zoning bylaw to check for potential conflicts. With the MBTA community's requirements. And while they did not find any such conflicts, they did find an inconsistency between our zoning bylaw and Section Three of the Zoning Act. Specifically relating to the use of temporary trailers in instances where residence has been destroyed by fire or other disaster. In such cases, our bylaw allows for the use of a temporary trailer for up to six months, whereas state law allows for up to twelve months. So the simplest fix is to change the six months in our bylaw to twelve months, which would make us consistent with general law, Chapter Forty A, Section Three. The planning board unanimously recommended five zero zero uh this article to town meeting, and that's it. If you have any questions.
Not seeing any questions. So, like I said, anybody's got any, oh, wait, we got a question. Um, just curious why the zoning bylaws are coming back before the special town meeting and not the annual town meeting?
I can answer that unless Scott would like to take that.
No, you go ahead.
Sure, so um, thank you so much for the question. We do have traditional articles that are on annual town meeting versus special town meeting. Um, the Select Board and the Planning Board felt that these zoning articles were imperative to. Uh, uh be accomplished at this special town meeting. Uh, first of all, the firearms bylaw. Uh, being brought back, then uh the economic growth potential of the articles three and, two and three. And then finally, because we were notified by the state that we were out of compliance with the temporary trailer. Section of our bylaw, we thought that that was, we felt that that was imperative to come before uh special town meeting. And the Select Board did vote to put those articles on the warrant.
Great, thank you. Uh, any more questions before I move on to the um Article Five? Okay, seeing none, and I'll still keep my eye out in case there is anymore. Um, we'll move on to Article Five, which is motions for reconsideration at town meeting, and for that, I'm gonna turn it over to Angela.
So um presently, our um general bylaw says that in order for a motion to be reconsidered. A a vote to be reconsidered at town meeting, um if we are at the same uh session of the town meeting. It requires a majority vote to reconsider. If we are at an adjourned session of the same town meeting, it requires a two-thirds majority vote. Uh, to reconsider. So this change is going to, if if it's approved, it will. Um, make those two things consistently, consistent, will consistently be requiring a two-thirds uh vote. Of of town meeting in order to reconsider something that has already gone to a final vote.
Um, are there any questions from the attendees on this article? All right, seeing none, moving on um to Article Six, which uh covers the publication of bylaw amendments. And for that, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Lori Shaw, our town clerk.
Thank you. Um, so first, I'm gonna read the the Mass General Law. So the Mass General Law uh for these amendments, before a bylaw or an amendment can take effect. It shall also be published in a town bulletin or pamphlet, copies of which shall be posted in at least five public places in the town. And if, and and then it goes on about if the town is divided into precincts, then it says, or instead of such publishing in a town bulletin or pamphlet. And such posting copies may be published at least twice. Um, a week apart in a newspaper or general circulation in the town. So what we have found is, um, right now, we post in the Lowell Sun, and it has become very expensive. Um, if we post at least for two separate town meetings. Um, if there's any amendments, it runs approximately thirteen to fifteen hundred dollars. Um, every time we post, so that could be around three thousand, maybe even fifteen hundred, maybe even more, three thousand dollars. So considering that these publications, the circulation tends to be low. Um, what, what I would like to propose is that we. Eliminate the publication in the newspapers and just continue posting them in the five different places, and we could even post it on the website as well.
Okay, are there any questions on that? And being very familiar with the Lowell Sun, I can tell you the, Lori's right, the circulation has gone down and. No, it's, that's a very expensive price for uh running those ads.
That's correct.
All right, um, I see somebody has raised their hand, but they need to actually type a question into the Q and A, please. So I'll come back to that question when she posts it. In the meantime, um, I will move on to Article Seven. Uh, for that, I'm going to turn this over to Kristen, um, which, oh, wait a minute, there we go, just. Um, before we turn it over to Kristen, uh, we've gotten two questions. Um, the first question would be, would the Westford Cat be a place things like that would be posted?
It could. Um, it it is is certainly an option. It's not anything that we have had any conversations with the Westford Cat. At this time about, but i- if it's an option, it could certainly.
And then relative to that same article is what, uh, where are those five locations? If you could repeat, I think you said.
Presently, the five locations are three at the 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 three different post offices we have. Uh, the Town Hall and the Library, the J B, J B Fletcher Library.
Uh, any additional questions? All right, like I said, I'll come back to it if if we need to. All right, now Kristen, I'll turn it over to you with regard to Article Seven.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, again, Kristen Last, Town Manager. Article Seven is a slight change to our general bylaw. Uh, if you attended town meeting in the spring, you uh perhaps voted on the soliciting and canvassing bylaw. That we worked on with uh Chief Chambers and his staff. Um, what we failed to notice was that uh we actually covered what is in our transient merchant bylaw. Within that new solicitation and canvassing bylaw. So Article Seven uh purely seeks to eliminate. The transient merchant section of our general bylaw, again, because it's covered under that new section that we adopted in April under Article Nineteen.
Um, any questions? From anybody with regard to this and seeing none, I'll always come back. Um, we'll move on to Article Eight, and for that, I'm gonna go back to Joe uh to discuss. Uh, accepting Cloverleaf Lane as a public way.
Sure, uh, hopefully, this is a straightforward one. Uh, this was a project that was approved towards the end of twenty twenty-one, definitive subdivision. Uh, Cloverleaf Lane was always intended to become a public way. Uh, so now it has been constructed, it was inspected throughout the construction process. Um, no deficiencies were found from our Public Works Department. Uh, they were very satisfied with the quality of construction. Uh, and the applicant has satisfied all conditions from their planning board approval, so we're asking town meeting to accept this as a public way.
Right. Uh, any questions? You're right, it probably should be very straightforward, but you know, you never know, somebody might have a question. Um, and seeing none, um, we will now turn to Jeff once again to discuss Article Nine, which is. The uh acquiring of uh by gift of two vacant parcels.
Thank you. So the Aubrey D. Acker Inc. Company is seeking to give three vacant parcels of land to the town of Westford. Each of these parcels has some potential value to either maintain or improve trail connectivity or access there too. The first two parcels are located off of Howard Road between the Hitch and Post Greens and April Woods subdivision. And some of you may know it contained a former rail line. The third parcel is located between number sixteen and number eighteen Kersey Circle. And would provide access to about forty-six acres of land currently held in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Which could have further access to Lowell and Stony Brook Roads. If this town meeting authorizes the Select Board to accept these gifts of land. We would expect that a future town meeting would be requested to transfer the care and custody of at least one of these three parcels. To the Conservation Commission. And we are sincerely, uh, we do appreciate the property owners for considering the potential value to the town. So, thank you very much. That's the summary.
Uh, any questions? Okay, um, we're moving right along. Oh, I got one. What is the tax revenue in these parcels of land that we're accepting? Essentially accepting.
So for all three parcels of land, there's a combined of. Uh, taxes were collected a total of two hundred seventy-one dollars for the last fiscal year, so for all three parcels combined.
Um, all right, yeah, any more questions? All right, well, uh, we'll now open the floor for the last article of the evening. Um, this is a citizen's petition to vote on warrant articles without physically attending town meeting, and for that. Uh, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Bill Taffel, um, who is spearheading this, and um, take it away, Bill.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Uh, this article is, as uh, Vicky said, a citizen petition. The the purpose of the article ultimately is to get to a situation where people can vote. On warrant articles without having to attend the town meeting. And I would preface my comments first by saying that this is in no way a criticism of the town, of the moderator, of the meetings, of anything that's gone. I've, I've been lobbying for this for years. So uh, you know, it's, it's not a new thing, but uh, in the recent months. There seemed to be quite a lot of interest to people who couldn't make it to town meetings in being able to vote. And so as a result, I put together this as a citizen petition. Uh, and got the more than a hundred signatures that are required to get the thing on the warrant. And what the article actually asks for is it asks the uh Select Board to work. Si- since the uh, the town meeting uh format and requirements and so on are specified at a state level. It's not something that the town can just decide to change. So what what this uh article asked for is to, for the Select Board to work with the state representatives. Who are Jim Arciero and John Cronin, to what looks like put a bill into the, into the legislature. That would enable Westford to take a path which would allow people to vote without going to town meetings. And there have been two options that have been talked about. Uh, one is a hybrid, so-called a hybrid meeting where you can attend. Uh, and participate and vote remotely. And the other one is uh, you'd have the town meeting as usual, but the vote would be conducted separately and subsequently. On a paper ballot at the polls. Uh, and of course, there are numerous details to be worked out, but. But uh, the ultimate aim is, is through some mechanism to enable people to vote without going to town meeting. And and the rationale for that is that a lot of people just cannot attend. And uh, so it tends to be a relative, hasn't been recently, but tends to be a relatively small body of people at the meeting. And the vote of the meeting isn't necessarily representative of what the town feels. And uh, an example, I would think, is even the last town meeting, which was a very large meeting on the scale of things. Uh, and the override budget was approved at that meeting, and then it was resoundingly defeated when it went to the polls, where a much larger number of people voted. So I, I do think there's something to be said for uh making an effort to. Get more of the opinions of the, the townspeople than those people who can attend the town meeting. So that's the ultimate purpose of this, and uh, if I, I had actually myself talked to Jim Arciero and his assistant. Uh, and and actually Jim and John came to, by Zoom, to a Select Board meeting. Where the topic was brought up, and uh, and essentially, they said, well, you know, the town should put together something what it wants. And come to us, you know, and then we can do something. So that's, this is a, an attempt to do that, and it's not, it doesn't stand alone. There are numerous other towns. That are in the middle of various efforts to get something along these lines in the works. So this, this really in a way is uh, is Westford joining the, the effort and and uh. As somebody mentioned to me today, that the more people, the more towns that come forward with the need to state representatives. More likely it is that they'll actually do something. So that's a thumbnail sketch of uh, of the article and the purpose.
Thank you, Bill. Um, are there any questions uh from the floor with regard to this article? I am not seeing it. Oh, well, yeah, now, is it binding? If approved, would Select Board do anything to help?
Is that a question for me?
No, actually, well, I'm looking at it going, yeah, you know, since we're lucky enough to have both John and Scott with us from the uh Select Board. Uh, maybe one of you could weigh in, please, on that question.
I mean, it, it is advisory. You know, and that being, but you know, the, the Select Board took no position on this because it's a, it's a article or. That the town is making a request to the board, and it would be whether presumptuous for us to say that we do or do not want to hear a town opinion. So of course, um, we have said. we said, please, you know, tell us what, what the will of the town meeting is. With that being said, it's, I think it's in general, the board is open to the idea of having a more open town meeting, but as, as Bill mentioned, there's a lot of of details that you have to work out, and you know, for example, with a ballot question, that works well for some things, does not work very well for budgets. Hybrid works well for a few hundred, not, you know, ten thousand. So there are issues to work out that we'll have to work with legislatures and other towns. It will be complicated, it will take some time. But if the town directs us to take the action, this board has a pretty long tradition of saying, we respect town meeting and we'll do it.
Thank you. Excuse me, are there any other questions?
Vicky, could I just jump in on that?
Absolutely, Kristen.
Thank you. So in addition to Scott's comments, we did receive a legal opinion from town council that he states this is not binding. However, Scott did state in his previous comments that the Select Board has a proven track record. If something is voted on at town meeting, the Select Board do take action and move forward.
Thank you. Yes, there, I don't.
There's a couple of, you know, within the, within the motion, it's within the article itself. You know, one item is that requests or requires the ten minutes to give monthly updates. That's the kind of thing that, you know, we all know that the pace of of a legislature is a lot of monthly progress. It's more like term-by-term progress. I think we would probably suggest some edits if it were approved, but in general, we'd be, you know, certainly open to the discussion.
Thank you. And before, since like I said, we're, we've just finished Article ten. Before we wrap this up, I have one more question. Oh, no, that's more of a comment. Thank you for hosting an informative session. You're welcome. And before I, I give my opening or closing comments, is there anything any one of the panelists want to share that they didn't feel like they did earlier? Angela, go right ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to let the audience know as well that along with our expectation that this will be a large meeting, we're going to have some new processes for the meeting itself specifically. We're going to be in four different rooms at Westford Academy, depending on how many people show up. We're going to be using the gym, the PAC, the cafeteria, and the aux gym. And it's going to be very important when people check in that they that they go to the room they're assigned to, because the clickers that they're using to vote with will only work in those rooms. So I, I would also just like to ask for everyone's cooperation. Obviously, this is the first time we're going to be having this type of a meeting where we'll be in multiple rooms at Westford Academy, and there are bound to be some hiccups, but Westford Cat and all of the town staff has worked very hard to put this together. There's going to be a two-way audio visual from all the rooms. There'll be assistant moderators in all, all the rooms and myself in the gym. And, and we think it'll all work out great, but we hope everybody will bear with us.
Great, thank you, Angela. And I think, you know, one of the key things I would always say anytime we attend town meeting, patience. Everybody needs to have patience. Patience is key. Get a little zen with yourself if you need to, because, you know, any, whether it's special town meeting or annual meeting, because there's a lot of nuances and a lot of information to be had. So I look forward to it. I'd like to thank everyone, all the, all the panelists that attended tonight. I'd like to thank everybody who joined us tonight to listen to this and to ask very thoughtful questions. And I'd like to thank the Westford Cat naturally for broadcasting this. And finally, you know, we look forward to seeing you on Monday night at Westford Academy, seven o'clock sharp. I think probably Angela would say the same thing. Be as early as you can, because it's, could be a very full meeting, and you want to allow yourself enough time to get checked in, although the last time we rocked it in terms of that checking in, but yeah, so thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.